He was asking, he's like, why didn't you say something about what you did? I didn't know what I did. I mean, like, I just wanted to be done.
They know you.
Yeah. That's the title of my memoir.
Yeah.
The unity of our.
This has never happened. I need you to have a picture with that cat.
Me?
Yeah, I want a picture.
Last fall, I used to be on TV and stuff. National TV, I can do it.
National TV, really, on national television.
Over camp.
Over the camp.
Yeah, over the camp, parks and shops.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate everyone being here this evening. We'll go ahead and get started here.
I appreciate everyone being here this evening, and we'll go ahead and get started. We have a little bit of excitement this evening. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you all stand and join me, and then remain standing for invocation this evening brought by Pastor Flannoy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God and kind Father, we come with humble hearts thanking you for your many blessings. We ask in special blessings for the families for the loss of the massacres in this country, as in that you would just soften their hearts. But on tonight, we ask that you would give prudence and wisdom to our council, to our mayor, for the better business of the citizens of Bonner Springs, and for the uplifting of your word. And Lord, after we leave here tonight, being the mechanics of our vehicle, let us get home safely and find those things that we left just as we left them. And Lord, teach us to love one another as you have loved us. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Perfect. Well, this is one of the biggest honors I've had to the pleasure of doing, and I'm an animal lover. Dogs more than cats, but that's all right. Yeah, she's ignoring me now. I'd like to make this proclamation. Whereas on June 11th, 2021, Bonner Springs Animal Control received a call about a kitten who was struck by a lawnmower. And whereas area veterinarian, Dr. Bodris, at Animal Care Clinic successfully performed emergency surgery to amputate the kitten's leg and tail. And whereas Animal Control Officer Kendra Anthony fostered the kitten and took her to work every day. And whereas the kitten, now known as Eileen, won the hearts of the Bonner Springs Police Department and earned her title as Station Cat on June 29th, 2021. Her story of survival and recovery is inspiring and has been featured by the Humane Society of the United States, as well as our local news stations. And whereas Eileen's primary job responsibility is to boost morale at the police department, but she also assists with reports by walking across keyboards and frequently steals chairs, especially the ones that get good sunlight. And whereas Eileen is an excellent ambassador for our police department and our community, she is involved in many community events where she enjoys meeting her fans and soaking up the attention. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby honor and proclaim Wednesday, June 29th, 2022, to be Station Cat Eileen Day in Bonner Springs, Kansas, and encourage all our citizens to appreciate and support Eileen's role as Bonner Springs Police Department Station Cat. Congratulations, Eileen. That's all for you, Cat. There you go. Thank you.
Do I need to push up? Oh, it went green. All right, fancy. Well, first off, I just want to say thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I was on the Edwardsville Agenda this evening, so I already went to their council meeting and spoke, and had the opportunity, just to swing out here, and was hopeful that you could allow me a few minutes just to speak. Staff, council, mayor, thank you very much. As you guys know, my name is Chuck Steitz. I'm the newly-elected District 7 County Commissioner. It's been an interesting six months, I will tell you that. But I think that with all the trials and tribulations that we're going through, I think we're going to come out on the other side with a good product. I want to make sure that, for myself, that I'm coming here periodically, giving both cities, Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, updates as to what's going on. I think it's important to maintain that communication. I'm going to work on, for this fall, I'm currently working on a town hall where we can have a question-and-answer session and let you guys know what I'm working on. When I was campaigning, one of the main things that I had heard, which was something that you guys addressed tonight, was the water. And I'm glad to see that you guys are moving forward with a solution to fix that. Unfortunately, that wasn't something that I could help them with, and I let them know that that was a Bonner Springs issue and that you guys would surely be addressing at that. So I'm glad to hear that. Taxes. Taxes were a huge concern. We all know that. And I'm going to continue to fight for our county mill levy to be reduced. That's where it impacts us. We know one of the things that they, example that they would give was the dollar bill, and it would show how many, how much was going to each taxing entity. And I think that when you break that down and you find out who all gets a piece of that dollar, when you reduce a city mill levy, you find out that you're really not making a huge impact. But we need to work on that county side. And we have a budget workshop Thursday night, and we'll be taking that back up. That's one of the things that I'll be speaking on. ARPA versus the CARES Act. So ARPA's huge. CARES Act, I feel, I was on City Council in Edwardsville at the time. I feel like we got jilted. Bonner did, and so did Edwardsville. That's my opinion. We didn't get proper representation, and we were, we were... And I can't put my finger on it. I don't know why, but we needed to do better as a county to make sure that Bonner Springs and Edwardsville was represented better. And I hope and pray that ARPA gets addressed and that we're able to do better for the two cities, Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. If you guys are aware, June 24th is the application deadline that all 501(c)(3)'s need to have their applications in. I was on the phone just late this afternoon, and even if your application is filled out incorrectly, get it in, get it timestamped on June 24th, because that means you submitted. Even if it's wrong and improperly filled out, we can fix that. We can get it. So there's a lot of dollars out there available for 501(c)(3)'s, and we need to make sure that that is the case, that everyone applies. Casino, Hollywood Casino grant dollars. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that at all. This year was my first year, and I will tell you all but about, and it's not a lot of money. This year, it was $43,000. It fluctuates because it's a percentage of revenue for the Hollywood Casino. All but about $5,000 of those dollars I put into Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. So of that $43,000, I put $38,000, $39,000 in Bonner and Edwardsville's 501(c)(3)'s. So, and I'll continue to do that. What bothered me is that there were several 501(c)(3)'s that had no idea what I was talking about. When I went and started reviewing applications, they said, "We've never heard of that." So I want to make sure that we're doing a better job at reaching out to those folks that are helping people in our community, Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, so they can receive these funds. The pilot, you spoke about the pilot. I hit them right off the bat with the pilot, Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. You guys pay emergency, and I spoke with Sean, I don't see him here, but I spoke with Sean and Amber and the mayor. And you guys, Edwardsville pays every month. Every month, Edwardsville's paying on their pilot, on their water. And I think we needed some answers as to why that was occurring. You guys are paying on an emergency basis as needed, and you guys are addressing your water. So that probably will go away at some point where you guys won't have that pilot. Unfortunately, it doesn't go away for Edwardsville, and that we need to make sure that the answers are given to us about why we're being charged. Another city is taxing another city, and those dollars go into their city general fund. Safe and welcoming, if you guys watched last Thursday. You know, it was changed at the state level, but they came back to us last Thursday at the full commission meeting with this ID program. I was the only commissioner that voted no on it. I'm not in favor of it. They also presented that it was called Wyandotte County Community ID, and I was opposed to it being called Wyandotte County because Bonner Springs and Edwardsville is in Wyandotte County, and they had no input on this. So we got, I got that name changed. It is the Kansas City Kansas Community ID now, not Wyandotte County. Very small, very small win, but it needed to be identified that it was Kansas City Kansas-driven initiative, not Bonner and Edwardsville or all of Wyandotte County. The gentleman I was speaking to just this evening back there talked about our services. What do we get? I get asked this all the time. What do we get for our county dollar? And that's a good question. Here's the answer that I received when I asked that. In our budget workshops, the services that we receive are the Health Department, the Sheriff's Department, the jail, and our parks. And I know I'm probably leaving a couple of them out. Yeah, and I keep that in the Health Department, but...
Licenses and...
Yes, yeah. An election office. That was the other one. Now, and I can't believe that, I forgot election office, and I'm about to wrap it up because I know you guys got a meeting. You don't want to sit here and listen to me all night. So you guys will probably receive this in the mail today. If you guys got your mail, I did, I got mine, but you guys will probably be receiving it soon. It is the Wyandotte County Election Reminder to Vote in this November, right? Well, if you look down here at early voting, there's four locations. Where's the closest one to Bonner and Edwardsville? Well, guess what? You've got to go to the Kane Center up on 122nd Street, and that's a pretty good haul from here. Or you could go down to the Joe Amio Argentine Community Center, which is a pretty good distance from here. The Eisenhower Rec Center, 72nd Street, pretty good haul. Or you could go all the way down to the election office. That's wrong. That's wrong. We're being ignored. I have brought this up, that this needs to be changed. We, county service, this is something that I feel like we can get a win for what we're getting for our county dollars. Small, it's small, it's incremental, but you know what? We've got to take every win that we can possibly get. And we need to get a voting location, early voting location, out here near Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. If you guys would like, my email address is ce-steitz@yco-kck.org. I encourage you guys to reach out to me. I have no issue. Matter of fact, there's been folks that say, "Hey, we really hate to bother you about this." But I will tell you, one of the main reasons that I ran, and I'm not throwing shade on anyone at all, but one of the main reasons that I ran is so that I can be responsive to all my constituents, to be a responsible leader, and be respected as your commissioner. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else that'd like to stand and address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move along to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the claims for city operation minutes from the May 23rd City Council meeting, public use requests for tiblotrot, and the public use request for a block party on Spring Valley. Anything to add or subtract by the staff? Citizens? No? Questions or concerns from the council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Vote, please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto our new business, the first item of which is a public use request for a block party on South Bluegrass. Staff?
This block party application was put on the regular agenda instead of the consent agenda, simply because we received some opposition to it. The gentleman requested the block party. He had one last year that we approved. He came in and requested the block party. Once I notified him that one of his neighbors had submitted opposition, he altered the application. Initially, he had requested to have all of South Bluegrass barricaded after the neighbor's concern. He requested just to have three houses on the street barricaded, and then also changed it from July 2nd to July 3rd to open up the possibility for fireworks at the block party. Everything that I have here, I included in front of, in the agenda if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Anything else from staff? Seeing none. Anyone else like to stand and address this item? Citizens? Is the applicant here? Oh, do you have anything to add? Pretty much covers it. All right. Seeing nothing else, I'd entertain a motion.
Need to get it on the agenda, so I'll make a motion, let's see, make a motion to approve the public use request.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mrs. Long. We'll start down here with questions, concerns, comments from the commission, from the council, sorry. Mr. Reeves?
As I recall, last year, there was a few problems with this location. One of which I was, became aware that there was possibility of people drinking alcohol in public, and another one, there was an excess amount of cars going up and down the street. Now, I would like somebody to speak to that and let us know that these problems are going to be taken care of, or whatever.
Would you mind coming up to the podium, please? Thank you.
Kenneth Bells, 542 South Bluegrass Drive. We don't supply any alcohol, and that was the whole reason why we wanted the block shut down is to eliminate the flow of traffic going up and down the streets because there are a lot of kids running back and forth from house to house. And, you know, it's dangerous not only for the cars, but for the kids as well because as they're lighting off fireworks, sometimes they come flying up the street and they don't see the firework. And then we've had cars run over fireworks, and it's just... We're just trying to avoid that altogether. And then the guy that had the issue with it last year, his issue was that there was people lighting off fireworks, and he came from another party and was trying to come home, and he couldn't get to his house because of people lighting off fireworks. And that's why we revised it to just have the section blocked off in front of a couple houses to leave his house open to where he could still get to it.
So you think these problems, if they existed or not, were not going to be a problem this year?
Yes.
Is that what we're saying here? And I think some other councilmen have some other questions also.
I am, I'm actually the person who was on the consent agenda last year, and I actually had it polled because I had some concerns last year. With basically blocking off a half a mile of a street that is kind of a main lottery street that we use in town, even though there would be other ways to get around, they would have to go a little bit of distance. But my concern also came was about the other residents because there's 37 households on that block, that stretch. And I was concerned that those other neighbors might run into some struggles exiting, entering their homes, as well as emergency vehicles trying to get up and down the road. The, after some assurance that that would all be taken care of, I was very disappointed when I read some of the protest letters that we got, a couple of protest letters, that a lot of those things that I saw as problems ended up being exactly that, problems. My question is, would be, is that I'm trying to understand what would be accomplished by blocking off just that middle of the street because now you're going to not alert local traffic who might want to utilize the road. They're going to come down the road. It's a city street, there's parking a lot on both sides. Now what happens when they get to those barricades?
Yeah. That's kind of why I wanted to block the whole street off and put the signs at the end of the street, that way people knew. And even last year, we didn't block the whole street off. We only blocked the section up. Basically, the barricades were out there to alert people that, "Hey, you can't go through this street all the way." Basically, it wasn't a through street.
But I think because it was blocked off, did it not extend?
No, we didn't block it off. Well, we only blocked it off a little section.
But I think some of the homeowners that live beyond that section were struggling because of vehicle traffic and having access to getting in and out of their driveways, as well as activities were taking place along that stretch of road outside of just those three homes.
Yeah, there were activities taken outside of that place.
So you can see where my concerns are.
Yeah. And that's why I originally wanted to have the whole street blocked off. But what the person that had the concern last year was trying to be a compromise. When I went around and was talking to all the other residents on the street this year, there was two people that didn't sign because they weren't home, and then the one person that had the issue, but everybody else was more than happy and welcome, and was actually looking forward to me coming around to their door and knocking and signing again this year.
Okay. No questions, thanks.
I want to clarify the date because the application is for the 2nd, but Chris, you mentioned the 3rd. It's changed to the 3rd?
Yes, that communication happened Friday afternoon and into Saturday, so the agenda was already out, so it's been changed to the 3rd.
So you will have fireworks?
Yes. Our intent was to do it on the 2nd because July 4th is on a Monday, and some people still have to get up and go to work the next day, so we were trying to make it feasible for everybody, where it wouldn't disrupt anybody's work schedule or anything like that.
And that's part of my concern was that the ordinance, I believe, calls for fireworks until 11:00 PM, is that right?
Yes.
And I know that you're not, that it's not always observed, but because it is sometimes a workday. And then it looks like trash might have been a problem last year.
Well, we went out and swept the streets and everything.
That was my question, thank you.
Was there any issue from the police standpoint from that?
No, we actually were out there on bike patrol last year. Three officers out there for this part. We didn't have any issues for our law enforcement. We had no protest or anything about any property.
So there wasn't any issues, I think?
Not that we were involved.
Well, I'm just concerned about that. I'm just concerned about... There, for several years, even on Nettleton, we had issues like this, and it was a pain. I'm still struggling with this, with the noise. And 11 o'clock is not a shut-off time. 2:00 in the morning, things like that, and the cleanup. And there's pictures that show there wasn't a cleanup, or maybe there was a pickup and a piling. I'm trying to find a way to sort out, to vote yes and to help, but also, I've been, I've experienced the other side of it, and I'm not happy about it. And I'm glad to see that there wasn't an issue with, from a police standpoint, with traffic and things. Going to the next person. I'm still struggling with this and thinking about it.
Ma'am?
I don't have any questions.
Sure.
Glad you're here. I think your demeanor is helping a tremendous amount. I had some questions too. As best to your ability, just ballpark, how many people do you think were there last year?
There was probably like 50 people there.
Okay. Were they all basically from Bluegrass, or was it people from out of town, or what?
There was friends and family, but mostly it was around Bluegrass.
Okay. In your judgment, do you think the music was a little too loud or not loud enough, or...?
No, once we started doing the fireworks, we turned off the music, and there wasn't really any music.
Okay. Speaking of fireworks, what kind of fireworks were you using? Or is it to the best of your ability?
Just whatever we buy at the fireworks stand down the street.
Okay, there was nothing brought in like half-sticks of dynamite or M80s or anything like that? Okay. Did notice that on your application, where it says, if I can read this, it says, "Statement that the public property used and adjacent areas will be cleaned up immediately after the event." Okay? That was not checked. I don't know if...
That was an error on my part, then.
Oh, that's what I want.
I meant to check it.
Okay. What is your definition of immediate?
We went out the next day, yesterday, and we swept up the whole street for three houses down.
Right.
And we shoveled it into the trash containers, and we put the trash containers on the side.
Well, I was kind of curious myself because we all have, you know, our own feelings as to what, you know, a particular word means. I took the opportunity to look up the definition, and the definition of immediate is occurring or done at once, instant, no interval of time, without delay. And I think that on some of the concerns that we had, this was one of them, that it took like a day or day and a half before a lot of that was picked up. The, if we were to approve this, would you be willing to check that box and adhere to the word immediate, which would mean cleaning it up that evening?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let...
If we narrow that down to where we're just blocking off that section of the street, then I'll ensure that that is totally done.
Okay, because that's, and I would think that would be, you would need to talk to yourself or to Chris? Okay.
We did wait till the next morning because it was dark out.
Right.
We felt it would have been better to clean up during the light where you could see everything.
Well, I don't disagree with that. But I do, we have the word immediate here, so I would, you know, want for you and for all of your neighbors and everything else to show that that was, because that was a concern that it took a little longer to do, which I can understand, it's a little harder to do it. But with 50 family and friends approximately, with that smaller area, it would be very, very quickly done. I know that you're probably... I know that you're probably aware that we do have an ordinance that there is no alcoholic beverages that can be consumed on our streets.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I would, you know, want that, you, you'd be aware of that, because I certainly wouldn't want any of your family or friends to, you know, have that, you know, be looking at that. There's also something that I didn't realize and that is a thing on fireworks that they cannot be set off in the street, that they must be set off in the yard. Were you?
Very glad you brought that up, sorry. Um, so what we've done this year, instead of lighting the fireworks off in the street, we're gonna have everybody sit up in my front yard, cause I got five acres over there and we're actually gonna go out back and we're gonna light the fireworks off in my backyard. So if there's any debris or anything like that, it's gonna be in my yard, so I'll have to deal with it before I move.
Yeah, cause I was uh, we've set ours off in our, our yard with our grandkids and stuff, but I wasn't aware that, I wasn't even aware of it either, but um, I think that's uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all the questions I have and I thank you for your honesty and your time on this.
Did you have any?
I appreciate you coming and making this application. You know, there's a, a lot of uh, strong emotions on both sides and wanting to celebrate the Fourth of July is uh, uh, something that a lot of people have a, a lot of interest in. And I have also um, asked to have a street closed back in the day. It's a younger man's job. Um, it's, it's a, a lot of work. The, the cleaning up and the lighting the fireworks. I, I've been fortunate, had on that delegated that, that's how I'll look at that, uh, at my, my private parties uh, to younger people. Um, but you, you, you see the concerns that neighbors have and uh, safety of the children in the, in the area is the utmost. And if it was, if, I'm sure there's adults out there watching the kids coming back and forth, bouncing across the roads and doing all those things, lighting off fireworks in the front yards. Um, if, if there's a way to assist one of your elderly neighbors to drive through that area, uh, the, the goodwill and uh, compassion you would extend to your neighbors would go a long ways in pacifying a lot of these concerns during the day. I don't know what time, from what time to what time you're planning on having the party.
Yeah, I think it's from twelve.
Noon till eleven o'clock at night. So in the afternoon, I know it gets hot. Those kids are running around a lot, but not every minute from twelve to eleven.
Yes.
And, and having some opportunity while you're out there to assist somebody back and forth. I know that it'll have to be open for emergency personnel anyway, but um, not that there's gonna be ambulances going up and down the street all the time. They, they can pretty much take care of a barricade if need be anyway. But uh, helping those concerned citizens will go a long ways in helping to assist in their their concerns. The same way with the picking up the trash that's on the street. My goodness, I had a neighbor around the corner that would roll by the big rolls of fireworks and roll them out down the block and start them on one end and it'd go for twenty minutes. The, the biggest thing other than the thrill of hearing all that is the huge mess afterwards. And it, it was cleaned up with leaf blowers, rakes and trash bags and like I said, a younger man's job. Um, but uh, taking care of those kind of things and putting them in a trash bag instead of stacking all those boxes and all that trash up right at, in a parking space waiting for the trash to come by. Stacking it up, taking care of it like what you would want. So those will go a long ways to making those concerns that your neighbors have and have complained about.
That's, I've heard those concerns and that's why we moved it to the, to my backyard, so if there's any debris back there, I'll be the one that has to do with it.
I don't have anything else. Anything else from any of the police?
I have a couple more comments. Um, I was happy to hear that you said you're going to move, would move that to the backyard, cause I think that's probably eighty percent of what we read had to do with the trash and debris. So I'm glad that that was occurred. Uh, I don't think it's a bad idea to go ahead and block off that section, you know, just in the middle, but I think it would still be a good ideal for us to have barricades at Second Street and at Comp to advise people, so that way we don't get into a headache with people trying to go down, find it's blocked and now they have to figure out a way to turn around with traffic parked maybe on both sides of the road, so. I don't know if we can amend it or?
Or just put additional barricades up down there that they can drive around.
Well, if you put the barricades at the end of the street, I'll get some cones from work and I'll set the cones out in front of my house.
And that helps a lot. That way they can drive around to their home, not make it across that area. If, if they need assistance, you'll be able to assist them with those cones.
I didn't, that's why I was gonna look for uh, the city clerk right there to let us know, do we need to amend this motion or you can just take that administratively and?
We can administratively update the application to show that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Me, sir? Nothing?
Uh, and you will get together with Chris to make sure you check that, is that what he needs to do, is check the box or whatever she advises? Great, thank you.
I appreciate you being responsible in closing off the road for the safety and fun of everybody and also um, it is difficult being held to a higher standard, because I know in other neighborhoods where the roads aren't blocked off, those roads don't get cleaned up right away or immediately, so, I mean, I've lived in Wyandotte County a long time and have seen a lot worse trash than what I saw in the pictures, so I appreciate you coming before us and answering all the questions and all of that and trying to make it safe and, and being responsible.
Nothing else? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve the public use requ- uh, we don't have them, did we get a motion in a second?
Yes.
Yes, we did, Tom.
Yes, I made the motion.
Okay, so we're voting on a motion to approve the public use request. Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Have a good time.
Moving on to item number two, is a resolution determining a need for housing and proposed rural housing initiative district. Steph?
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. Far away. There we go. Um, we have a resolution that would adopt a housing needs analysis determining a need for housing and proposing a rural housing incentive district. And um, in your packets, there was the housing needs analysis along with the resolution and I have um, just a quick few slides to kinda go over the housing needs analysis and the rural housing incentive district, since that would be a new incentive to our city.
Please.
So this first slide goes over um, some of our economic and demographic overview for the city based on the 2020 popu- census. Our population is um, about seventy-eight hundred people with a median income of sixty-eight thousand two fifty. Um, we have an average household size of two point five five people per household. In the city, we have a total of thirty-one, three thousand one hundred fifty-nine housing units and three thousand sixty of those are occupied, leaving ninety-nine unoccupied, um, which is three point one percent and that's down tremendously from two thousand ten when it was nine point one percent. And then our unemployment rate in the Kansas City metro as of January twenty twenty-two was three point four percent, which is down from the height of our pandemic in twenty twenty where it was six point one percent, so we're getting very close to those. Now we'll go over the um, analysis that we did, the for-sale housing market of the occupied homes. Seventy-two percent of those are owner occupied. We did a um, survey of our newer traditional subdivisions and we have six hundred and eighteen total lots in those. Five hundred and eighty-nine of them have been built or under construction, leaving only twenty-five of those lots available for um, future houses. As of May twenty twenty-two, there were twenty-two homes listed for sale and that included one newly constructed home and that also includes pending offers. Um, this is a slight increase since what we've, from what we've seen the past year or so. It's been a very competitive market with, as soon as a house goes on for sale, it's sold within days, if not before it even hits the market. Um, so now we're, I think some people have a little bit of a chance now, maybe to get a home, but it's still a very competitive market. Um, and then the average sales price for new and resale homes in the city and everywhere else continues to go up. In twenty sixteen, the average cost for a new home was two hundred and sixty-four thousand and that has increased in twenty twenty-one to four hundred and eleven thousand. And then for all homes, this includes new and resale homes, the average in twenty sixteen was about two hundred thousand and in twenty twenty-one, it's increased almost ninety thousand to two, two hundred ninety-two thousand is what we've seen the past year. Bonner Springs, yep. All right, rental housing market. Um, so of the occupied housing units, twenty-eight percent of those are renter occupied. We did a survey of our seven larger rental properties and of those, we have three hundred and ninety-two units at a ninety-eight percent occupancy level. That leaves seven available units in all of our larger rental properties, which is very low. Um, our market rate units have no units available. Our income restricted had three and our um, senior housing had four units available. We have no moderate income developments or age restricted communities, which is something we saw again and again throughout the survey that people would like to see. Our housing survey and low vacancy rate reflect a strong demand for additional rental, rental housing of all types. We did some numbers on the forecast for the housing command, de- demand over the next decade. Um, in twenty twenty-three, there's a projected population of about eighty-three hundred people and a household median income of eighty-five thousand. This has, um, we have the potential to gain even further population with some of our current projects that have been announced. These are large projects that we've not seen before. Um, so the Old Dominion, um, Freight Line, Medline and Skanel properties projects are all bringing a considerable, considerable amount of jobs to the area and many of those are being transferred from out of state. So if we have housing for these people that are coming from out of state, then there's an opportunity for us to capture more residents. Our study recommendations. There we go, study findings. Um, so the study shows that there was a, that there is a shortage of quality housing with, which in, within the city and this is a substantial deterrent to future economic growth and development. Um, if we don't have um, a good base workforce, we're not gonna bring in those larger projects. If we don't have a good base of rooftops, we're not gonna bring in good commercial projects. So it's kind of a, it's all, it's all uh, interconnected. And despite our best efforts with our current incentives, this shortage is expected to persist. Um, the future economic well-being of our city would depend on providing additional incentives for the construction or renovation of housing, since our current incentives aren't, aren't really getting us too many projects in the housing realm. And our above-market occupancy rates for both rental and um, the competitive market suggests there's a pin-up demand for all types of housing throughout the city, so that being said, there's an opportunity for new housing of all types to be well received in the market and they'd have a good occupancy rate as well. Based on those side uh, findings, our study recommendations are um, to try to capture those potential population and workforce, workforce growth increases as these new developments come online and as we have future ones that are pending, we'd like to see our population grow. We need to identify some mar- marketing strategy recommendations for future new housing, um, construction and product types and pricing and an example of this is how we've structured our neighborhood revitalization plan with the senior housing um, receiving an additional rebate for additional years. Um, so we can kind of use that, that type of a um, strategy to um, apply it to other incentives as well, to get the type of housing that we need in the city. And um, provide an additional incentive options such as the rural housing incentive district, which would encourage the construction of housing in the city. Um, marketing strategy recommendations, this is to attract some of those residents. Uh, one of our strategic plan goals is to maintain and grow a diverse economy, economy and we want to retain and attract jobs, so we need to offer persec- prospective employees and their employers a more diver- diverse mix of residential housing for both on the for-sale side and the rental side. And then one of our objectives in the strategic plan was to preserve and increase the supply of housing for all income groups and we can um, achieve that by doing some nodal development plans and I, and incentivizing housing or mixed-use districts in key intersections in areas such as downtown or um, along the K seven corridor where we'd like to see housing. And getting a wider mix of housing to attract and retain residents in all, all ages, all income levels. And now I'll kinda talk about the rural housing incentive district, since this, this is new to our city, we've not had the opportunity to use this incentive before. This incentive is designed to aid developers in building housing by assisting with the financing of public improvements. There's an option to do um, a pay-as-you-go type of uh, reimbursement and there's an option for bonds. The um, incentive would capture the incremental increase of the property taxes that's created with this, with the housing development for up to forty, twenty-five years or until the costs of the improvements are reimbursed and that's whichever comes sooner. So once they hit their cap, it's done and it comes back on for full taxes. The reason why we've not been able to use this before is because prior to July of last year, it was, uh, it excluded cities with, in a, in a county over sixty thousand population and the new legislation allows any city with a population under sixty thousand regardless of the county population. Um, and then we would set the districts and the percentage of the increment property taxes to be paid to the developer, just like we would with TIF or IRB or any other property tax abatement. So we do have a proposed project and district. The um, Sandstone Town Homes are at, proposed to be at five forty-six North One Hundred Thirtieth Street. That is the property to the north of Feldman's off from K seven and One Hundred Thirtieth. Altogether, it's approximately a twenty-eight million dollar investment and of that, about three million of it as of right now, with costs, you know, going the way that they are, but uh, about three million would be um, the incentive reber- reimburseal, reimbursable expenses and they would do a pay-as-you-go option, they're not interested in doing um, issuing bonds. And in this development, it would be one hundred forty market rate, two and three-bedroom townhomes that are about twelve to sixteen hundred square feet. Um, some would have a basement or garage and then they would also have community recreation amenities such as trails, shelters, playgrounds, a detention feature. Um, so the RHID process where we would need to go from here, the first step is the housing needs analysis, which we've completed. The next step is Before You Tonight, which is a resolution adopting the housing needs analysis, finding the shortage of housing, um, and proposing the district. After that would be passed, we publish it in the paper and it gets sent to the secretary. After that would be passed, we publish it in the paper and it gets sent to the Secretary of Commerce for approval. And once the secretary approves it, we pass another resolution setting a public hearing to consider the district and the development plan. So between now and the public hearing, we would put together the development plan with the developer that outlines the percentage reimbursement and all of the details within the district and the plan and the development. We send out notices to planning commission and the taxing jurisdictions, just like we would with many of our other property tax abatement projects. We'd hold the public hearing and then that night we would consider an ordinance to set the district and the plan. Following that, there'd be the 30 day protest period where another taxing jurisdiction could find that, that it would have an adverse effect and protest it. And then if there's no protest, we would, it would go into effect, we would notify the county and the district of the plan and it's just like many of our other incentives at that point. Happy to answer any questions about the housing needs analysis or the incentive. We also have Alex Howe, he's the developer of the project. If you have any questions specifically regarding Sandstone Town Homes.
This is just one district. We could have many districts.
We could have many districts. You have to have a proposed plan before you're able to set a district. A lot of downtowns can use it as well for second level apartments and things like that and we could, we could do many different districts throughout the city.
Other than the lack of incentives or not enough incentivization, what other factors have kept housing not at the level what we would want?
I, I think that there's a lot of property in the city that could definitely be developed. It's owned, a lot of it's owned by developers that we could re-approach them and see if this is something that they might be interested in to start to move forward on some of those projects.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, wait, I'm sorry. Is there anything else that anyone else in the, the audience would like to add, staff or citizens for or against? I apologize. Now, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution adopting the housing needs analysis, determining a need for housing within the city of Bonner Springs and proposing a rural housing incentive district.
Second. Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Reeves and we'll start down here with questions, concerns, comments by Mr. Shannon.
You covered it very well.
No, nothing.
No questions?
I just always worry about what it's going to do to the school district.
I have a couple of questions. So breaking this down into short sentences and small words so that I can follow. So if we set a district for, using the example of the townhomes at Sandstone, you said there were $3 million of potential reimbursable expenses. What types of expenses fall into that category?
So it would be some land acquisition is included, site preparation is included, water, sewer, street grading, drainage, paving, curbs, gutter, street lighting, underground and private utilities, sidewalks, water mains and extensions.
Okay, so of that $3 million, we would determine X percentage and of that percentage, we have the option to say this much goes back to the developer off the top, we retain this much?
Yes, we, whatever percentage we set for the developer, that's the percentage that they get in reimbursable, in reimbursement. So the rest of it, the taxing jurisdictions would collect.
Okay.
Yep, following.
So TIF, for example, is very similar and it's about a 50% tax abatement. So if we assign 50% to their allowable expenses, they would go out of pocket and get paid back as they do it, pay as you go, up to 50% of their allowable or reimbursable expenses.
Right. And what are other surrounding cities doing in terms of determining that percentage?
This is new to our area. Prior to this, it was rural, only used in, in the counties that have small populations under 60,000. So it, it depends on their policies and, and how they set their incentives up. We would want to make sure that the costs of the development are covered so that the taxpayers aren't burdened by growth. And that is also as part of the development plan, there's a feasibility study required that would show that those costs are covered.
Like would TIF?
Right. So changing gears slightly, because we know that the majority of the available buildable property in town is owned by a small number of developers, can we incentivize specific types of housing?
We can.
One of my pet heart projects is senior living, 55 and older maintenance provided type housing. We can, we could potentially set up a district or an incentive for that type of housing.
Yes, we could say that we'd like to see that type of development in this location and if you do this type of development, then we will give you this percentage, higher percentage. If you do another type of development, you may not get the incentive or it may be a lower amount.
How much available property in Bonner Springs is not owned by a developer? Do we have any feel for that?
I know that there's not a lot of vacant property on the market right now.
That's the biggest problem, I think. We all want to see things developed, but the developers are busy with other projects and there will be.
Or not motivated and that's the, whether or not this incentive will motivate them or not. Has there been an inventory of developers and what they're, you're interested in this and you have a property you're looking at developing, how important is this incentive to your development? Sir?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think one question here.
Please.
Thank you.
Alex Howe, one question you had was you asked about surrounding neighborhoods and Amber's correct, the RHID itself is newer to, closer to Kansas City, but just across the street really, Kansas City, Kansas, there's a Legends project where they actually gave the developer, I think $8 million on top of a 10-year tax abatement. Kansas City, Missouri just recently stopped and I'm sure everybody's aware in the news, but for the longest time they were doing 100% for 15 years and 50% for 10 after that. So Lee Summit has a pretty hefty tax abatement as well. So there certainly are other municipalities incentivizing multifamily projects like this. And then as far as the 55 plus as well, we would be more than happy to explore that here because this would be a maintenance provided community. Most of the floor planes we have right now would have second level bedrooms, which obviously isn't ideal for 55 plus, but we could, we would be more than happy to explore some patio homes as well.
And I know that's part of the deterrent to building senior living is that it needs to be one level, which obviously cuts back on your income possibilities.
Not necessarily. I mean, we, we certainly could figure out ways. There certainly are architects out there.
That's the thing that we hear over and over and over is that we're really lacking that and it's, if we can find a way to retain multi-generational families within our city, that would benefit all of us.
Yeah, absolutely. And then certain, some sort of mix or something like that is.
Thank you.
And sorry, the other question I bounced around there.
No, that's okay. One of my concerns is I know it's, incentives are valuable to developers.
Right.
And I don't think that's the only thing holding some of the developers back. I think they're, they have other concerns, other places they're busy with and I, I just wondered if this level of incentive is enough to actually cause developers to start doing that in Bonner Springs.
From a tax abatement standpoint, that really does go a long ways and from the way that an appraiser is going to look at it, the loan you're going to be able to get for it, it's pretty paramount that the tax abatement is longer than 13 years. And so that really does mean a lot. I've mentioned to Amber, I would much rather have 50% for 15 years than 100% for eight years, just like when you start to think about it from that perspective. I know 100% is not on the table, just for an example though. So I do think it does make a big difference. I also think just as land has gotten more expensive across the entire metro and industrial has continued to be such a great part of the Kansas City metro, you guys are obviously seeing it with some great projects going on, I think that ultimately will drive some potential for housing, but at this point in time, I certainly think some sort of incentive and payment is required for kind of a, and look, we could go put lower quality finishes and siding and then I think in 10 years, none of you would want to ever see me again. And so I personally think that's very important to using, whether it's stucco or a concrete masonry type siding that is going to look good in 20 years is pretty important as well.
I appreciate that and I know it's different for each developer. I'm just, I value the incentives myself, but I don't know how much, I, I think the amount that we would have to incentivize to make a significant difference in our housing inventory is beyond our ability to incentivize.
Yeah.
I'm, I don't want to be a glummy goose, but we can only do so much.
Yeah.
And we're competing with every other local, you know, town around as well. And in our little community, we only have so much space, so much land and those that control it, I don't know how much an incentive like this will make a difference, but hopefully it will and we'll get things moving along.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Other questions, concerns, comments?
This is a, I actually talked to some state leaders about this. This is a big concern that's decimating the smaller towns, you know, there's this hard answer to get, you know, manufacturing to come in there. So it's the chicken and the egg. You got to have affordable housing. If you don't have affordable housing, you can't get the workforce and, and so I, I like a proposal like this and using very strategic pieces. So I welcome the idea and thanks for the effort.
I'd like to welcome you to town and we hope you succeed with the project. To answer Councilor Gurley, I believe Edwardsville just recently passed, I think, a rural housing district, I think last month or the month prior, and I don't know if they've set, have an actual plan yet as far as what they'd send incentive wise, but they recently did one right off of, it'd be at 4th Street, I think it is 4th Street just to the north of K32 up on that hillside there. Otherwise, no, appreciate the presentation Amber and the questions you'd ask, they were great, so thank you.
Yeah, along with this, I think it looks like a good idea, but it says the term of such reimbursement can be up to 25 years, so we get to set that timeframe ourselves per project, correct?
Yes, the incentive percentage and the timeframe would be based per project. So the development plan outlines all of that.
And we also would get to decide if that gets to be passed through, if somebody sells it to a second owner, we can decide not to do that.
I would think so, I'd have to double check on that.
That's all.
The tax incremental financing goes with the product, the property, so I doubt that the incentive would, would be limited to just the owner, the first person to build it. It would probably be a part of the, the project, not, and the project could change hands several times before it's even finished. So I, I would imagine that. The case with the CID up at, by McDonald's, that's transferred, that's transferred. So it's, it's a time factor. 15 years is the, probably the smallest, but the one up there was 22 years and I think that's done by the state, the, up to 22 years. But for the commercial, the CID, which, commercial incentive district, so it would probably go with the, but the, the percentage is what we'll want to do and look at our, we have a incentive policy and updating that perhaps, and that is what we'll want to align with the incentive programs as they come back through the RHID. And what percentage is, for 55 and older development, you could probably go a higher percentage because other taxing, taxing jurisdictions probably wouldn't be affected as much. So a 55 and older housing community probably wouldn't have a lot of kids going to school there, so that, that would have an effect on their ability to participate at that level. So all those things, and that's what our incentive policy does, so.
Thank you.
Other questions, concerns, comments from the council? Seeing none, vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve a resolution adopting the housing needs analysis, determining a need for housing within the city of Bonner Springs and proposing a rural housing incentive district. Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for your professional input tonight. It, it helped a lot and hopefully the, your project will flourish as, as well as many others' housing projects in Bonner Springs, so thank you. Rolling along, item number three tonight, a resolution amending the fee schedule.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. We set the fee schedule in December of each year and since that time, we have requested rates, our annual rates for nuisance abatements and those fees have increased. So we have requested to increase the fees on the fee schedule to cover those nuisance abatements. We've also further simplified it, so we have the mowing is one line, there, there's an administrative fee for any nuisance abatement and then all other nuisance abatements would be at cost because it's, it's really various on, it depends on the property and the type of abatement that we're doing and the administrative fee would, would still apply to those. We're also proposing a billing late fee of 5% of the total bill after 30 days on any accounts receivable bills. We currently have a 5% on our utility bills. This would have the same late fee on all of our other invoices as well to cover the cost of staff having to process that again and sending it out and reminders.
Thank you. Any other staff input? Seeing none, citizens for or against? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a resolution amending the fee schedule.
Second.
It's moved by Miss Gurley and seconded by a whole bunch of people.
I think it was Counselor Shannon.
Mr. Thompson?
Oh, Thompson.
Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here again.
Nothing additional here.
Nothing here.
Do we have a lot of accounts payable bills that extend past that 30 day due date and do we have a lot that extend even further than that?
I know for the nuisance abatements, some of those extend, so we send out a second notice and then after that time, most of them are able to assess to the property. I'm not sure about other categories of bills that we send.
So we don't need to look at an additional fee after 90 days or 120 days or anything like that at this point?
I would, I don't think so.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing.
Nothing. Seeing no other questions, concerns or comments, vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve a resolution amending the fee schedule. Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. I may take up mowing as a side job if I'm getting...
$150 up an hour, that's... It wouldn't take 100, it might take 72, 73.
We're asking you to reconsider.
Yes. So without being real successful on that, I'll move on to the city manager's report.
I don't think I have anything more to add than what Sean already had in the report.
Very good. City council items, and we've moved around, so I'll just start right here. Mrs. Woods?
Everything gets explained and I love it.
It's city band time. Coming to the city band concerts, 8:30 Thursdays, Kelly Murphy Park.
We had a swim meetup at the pool and all the facilities were in great shape and there's a lot of people using the golf course on, it was a Friday morning, so it was really nice to see.
The golf course?
Yeah, disc golf.
Disc golf course, sorry.
And they looked like they were professionals, the way they were carrying all their gear and everything, but it was really nice to see that in use and being appreciated, so great job, staff.
Nothing here.
Yeah, the band concert, the jokes that are used there, they are very, very good jokes and groan-worthy.
We're carding the groans.
Should we acknowledge those or not?
I happen to really love the jokes, but I didn't get to make it to the first one this year. I've heard a lot of compliments from the community, from the farmer's market for EMS, fire, and police coming out to do their demonstrations. One compliment to the EMT, I believe her name's Allison, who was handling the children on the fire truck and how well she did with that. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that's something they did just on their own. It wasn't something that, you know, we didn't take a truck out of service or anything like that. And then the demonstration with Chico last week or two weeks ago, sorry, got a lot of community response and everybody was really grateful and appreciative of that, so.
Chico was great, yeah.
Nothing?
Thank you for mentioning that. That's always helpful and I like...
About the jokes?
No, no. About the compliments you've heard, it's nice to hear. The jokes, they're a labor of love and they serve a big, a very important purpose, I've been told. So I will continue to bring, keep believing that, I keep telling people that.
Let's be resented.
Yeah, lip resting is very important. I don't know. Thank you all for being here tonight. I did have an opportunity, I wondered a few things to go over. The, I did hear about the swim meet. Swimmers to your marks travels across the little draw all the way over to Deerfield. So we can hear, we can hear that. And they start nice and early. I was out doing my pool work. Yeah, I was doing my pool work and it was... I had it, desired it.
You jumped in.
That's great. The band concerts, I do enjoy being there, not so much for the jokes, more for the concert. It was great this last weekend.
Assistant band director from Udora, he's fantastic.
Yes, and I'm looking forward to the next one. It's, if you haven't, if you've been before, come back because you'll be slightly pleased. And the ice cream social was phenomenal, so don't come for the jokes, come for the ice cream and the band. I'd also like to compliment the touch-a-truck that went on up, that the city supported. That's great to see, the kids love to get on all those trucks and equipment. And it's nice, it takes a lot of effort to get the employees to put all that stuff out and put it away, but it makes a huge difference. And those are the quality-of-life issues that it makes so nice to be public service and being responsible for those kind of things and having great professionals across all of our city utilities, public works, police, EMS, fire, all of them. So thank you. It was nice to see Commissioner Stites here this evening and bring that, his little update, which was nice, and hopefully we'll be able to continue that on a semi-regular basis. Certainly if you have any concerns, reach out to him or if you have any questions, I'll be happy to pass those along. I did have an opportunity to meet with Mayor KR from Edwardsville and myself and Mayor Gardner from the Unified Government Kansas City, Kansas today in a meeting and we discussed a lot of those issues. We talked about the Loring Service Area, we talked about BPU, CARES Act funding, their budget process, their auditing that's being done. I got to brag on how wonderful the audit process is for our community because we put a lot of work and respect into it. And it does not sound as if theirs is going as smoothly. They may have some areas that they'll have to do a deep dive in. I encouraged Mayor Gardner to stay the course. It's something that will benefit the community far better than trying to disregard those reports instead of going in and digging down deep into the different areas. Our county government, we have tried to be very diligent in being aware of what we do get for our property tax that the county charges. And getting an accounting for that and working through that is very important. They're also starting a charter review committee and I was asked to be a part of the county administrator selection group or board or advisory board, I'm sure, not a selection committee. So we'll have a lot of participation in the government as we have, the local county government as we have before. So if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out. One of the things that has come up a couple of times is the opportunity to perhaps have some county services available here in our city hall. We have the luxury of having some space that we could utilize in that capacity. And I don't know if it would be all county services, but at least some county services that might be available for citizens in Western Wyandotte County to utilize. Instead of having maybe early voting, public health licenses, fees, car tags, those kind of things, or at least a drop-off and a pickup or something. So those are being considered. I don't know what will come of that. The CARES Act and ARPA funding is a point that we're continuing to discuss. We're going to bring up at a county budget process, encouraging them to consider our needs and what we need from our county government and to reconsider some of those issues that we brought up many times before. So we're continuing to be diligent on that. And that should come up before the end of the month. We'll have an opportunity to convey that to the county government before the end of the month. The county's been impacted by that IT problem they had and their budget process, it sounds as if that's been affected. Now, I don't know if that will affect our budget process or not, but I encourage them if any allowances they receive from the state because of that problem or that delay, if the numbers are delayed to us, we'll need the same allowance, same concern there. And they will address that as possible. And I think that covers it, unless anyone else has any questions for me?
We're adjourned.